So, yes, we did. They got her, uh... ...observation, um, they got a model rider who take him to blood tests every eight hours. He said three tests, eight hours apart, well, to show if there's any drugs.
I didn't know that worked.
The last one, the chair for you. Well, you have some chemical products?
How you doing, Ryan?
Hi, Ryan.
Ryan?
Yes. Once, once I... Well, then, I'm going to modify the... To, uh, remove...
Or either, you remember, early or late.
Or under the agenda, move number eight to number one. You have very... Well, we can't go by that clock.
We're either early or late.
We're gonna get it going.
Oh, we can.
Is your, uh, is your wristwatch official, Mark?
It is now.
It is now, very good. Okay, please rise.
Give us your guidance so we may make the right decisions. Help us to be good leaders so that all may benefit. Let all people be friendly and kind to each other. Help us to have a better world. Amen.
Clerk, call a roll.
First ward. Fourth ward.
Here.
Fourth ward.
Here.
Fifth ward.
We are going to make two adjustments to the agenda. Item number five is going to be removed due to a problem with the, uh, the bid we're submitted. We're gonna have to ask for resubmissions, I believe. And I'm going to move item eight to do that in place of item one to start with. We want to take this, uh, time to thank Fred Somerville for his long and dedicated service to the city of Fulton with the Fulton Fire Department. And I have a resolution that I would like to read into the minutes of this meeting and then present to Mr. Somerville. Whereas Fred Somerville retired from the Fulton Fire Department on June 25th, the year 2000, and whereas Fred Somerville began his career in the Fulton Fire Department on April 6th, 1974, and was promoted to the rank of lieutenant on December 12th, 1984, and whereas Fred Somerville served our community for more than 26 years as a dependable and dedicated member of the Fulton Fire Department. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Michael Stafford, along with the members of the Common Council, the Fulton Fire and Police Commission, and Fulton Fire Department, wish to express our appreciation to Fred Somerville for his exemplary service to the city of Fulton and also wish him well in his future endeavors. Fred, thank you. I'd like to just say to the council and to the city that Fred, for the years that I've known him, especially since being assistant chief, that he's been very dependable, conscientious worker, he's always been there to, uh, fight the fires and serve the city in the capacity that he had. He was always, uh, very concerned about making sure equipment and apparatus was always ready to function so that we would be prepared. And, uh, the service that he has provided has been a very fine service, and I think that losing him through retirement is gonna be a long time coming to replace him. And, uh, in a way, I'm sorry to see him go, but, uh, I'm looking forward to retirement someday too, and I hope that you enjoy retirement.
I'd like to just say thank you to the city for giving me the opportunity to put in a little over 26, very short years, it seems like. It's, I haven't really felt that it was a job, it's more of a, a career and a privilege. I'm gonna miss the department, and I thank everybody for coming.
Thank you very much.
Resolved that the city clerk is hereby authorized, directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, August 15th, 2000, at 7:00 PM in the common council chambers of the municipal building, 141 South First Street, Fulton, New York, relative to a proposed local law which would offer an early retirement incentive to eligible city employees.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved that the minutes of the common council meeting held on Tuesday, July 11th, 2000, are hereby approved as per attached.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Whereas the city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this common council meeting of August 1st, 2000, at 7:00 PM in the common council chambers of the municipal building, Fulton, New York, located at 141 South First Street, Fulton, New York, relative to a proposed local law which would amend subsection 177-25 of the Fulton City Code regarding sign regulations.
Before I declare the public hearing open, uh, I would like the city attorney, because it is a short section, or two sections, if you would, uh, read those so that everybody understands what we are discussing tonight.
Certainly, Your Honor. Um, what this proposed law does is first of all, add a definition to the, um, current city code defining portable signs as follows. A sign not affixed to any wall, roof, post, or building, generally referred to as A-frames, T-frames, curb, or sidewalk sign, and sandwich boards. Then, the proposed law adds a new section, 177-25F6, which states as follows. Portable signs shall not be allowed in any city right-of-way except as follows. A, on that portion of property owned by the city of Fulton and located on the southeast corner of West Broadway and West First Street, and on the south, second street and Oneida Street, except that no more than two signs shall be placed at each of these locations at any given time, and that a permit be issued by the Bureau of Code Enforcement for each sign. The duration of this permit shall not exceed two weeks. B, signs shall not exceed 12 square feet per side. C, signs shall only advertise events sponsored by not-for-profit organizations, for example, service clubs, churches, schools. D, any signs placed in violation of this ordinance shall be confiscated and then destroyed, if not claimed, within 30 days.
After hearing that, or having the city attorney read that, I declare the public hearing open. Does anyone care to speak on this issue? Please, uh, come to the microphone and state your name and address.
My name is Fred Craig, I live on West Third Street, Fulton. Um, if there's three people applying for that, that spot, how do you determine who the first, who the two are gonna be?
By whoever applies first.
First come, first served.
Right. And it's limited to two weeks, so somebody couldn't come and get one for the whole summer, for example. All right, thanks, Tom.
How does that apply to vehicles that have signs on them?
Well, those would be, those would be, um, regulated by the vehicle traffic law, as far as any obstruction or anything they create. This law only refers to signage in the city right-of-way. Any signs that someone puts on private property, fixed private property, that, those are governed by other provisions of the sign ordinance, which does have permit requirements and things like that. But in a vehicle, it's quite different because there's vehicle and traffic law regulations because, um, getting, involving obstruction of the view, things like that.
Okay, so this is not intended on advertisement signs so much as it is right-of-way signs? Well, th- this is to, uh, to control the number of the A-frame signs that we see that people are placing here and there about the city. How about these signs you put at gas stations, advertising deals that you can't see when you go down the road? These signs they drag up on wheels that are... Well, anything that is, is put there that obstructs view, that is, uh, can be taken care of under the vehicle and traffic law. Okay, 'cause we've had some problems with those, even with real estate signs? Yes. There, where you pull up to the intersection, you can't see 'cause the signs are, you know? If you're in one vehicle where you're up high enough, you can, but when you come along with another vehicle at a certain height, you can't see. Anytime that we get, uh, reports of that, we can, uh, get those signs moved under the vehicle and traffic law.
This also takes into account, uh, those areas, say, on Broadway where they have the small shops there, they can't, would it regulate against those A-frames in front of those shops?
Yes.
Just any that are in the right-of-way.
Well, basically, the right-of-way probably goes right to that.
Then it would.
Is there anyone else that would care to speak on this? If no one else cares to speak, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'd just like to, if, I'd just make a couple of comments. Um, I, for one, am pleased to see this ordinance. I think the council for years has discussed this, but never has brought anything forward. Uh, of course, this, uh, piece of legislation went through the planning commission, and they certainly discussed it at some length, and, uh, I compliment them for once again making a good recommendation to us. Um, obviously, we have signs that are, uh, not, not attractive, signs that are, um, if we want our appearance of our city to look good, this is, this is a measure that we can use to do that. I know on the way over, and of course, at different times, I've noticed different signs. Um, I have one sign that I've seen that unless you get real close to it, you don't know what it says. So, uh, hopefully, this will, uh, take into consideration the signs that have been placed in the cities right-of-way and have continued to be unattractive. Um, I know also that, uh, I'm a little tired of seeing the signs that say, "We need 29 people to lose 30 pounds in 30 days," so I hope that this takes care of that, too.
It should take care of that.
Um, 'cause I've seen these everywhere from, from here to Syracuse, so, um, but also now, the, when we pass something like this, um, if there's signs that are presently up, do they get any kind of a, a notice that the city has passed an ordinance, a local law, that in effect will, uh, affect this position of the sign, or do we just, uh, remove the sign?
Well, I think legally, the only notice required is what was published in the paper about this particular hearing, but I think it certainly would not be a bad idea if they were so notified, and I think that I will talk to...
I think it would be a city-friendly thing that...
Yeah, definitely would be.
Because some, some people have put signs in certain locations that I've noticed that, well, that's, I've seen a sign that's been up there for, you know, four or five months, it's a decent sign, but it's not a sign that we want in our cities right-of-way, so, I think, uh, everyone would appreciate that consideration.
I think a lot of what bought the sun, especially from planning's point of view, was the clutter aspect, and when you look at the signs, especially the ones that advertise things for profit and that are outside of the city, it makes you wonder why we're allowing public property to be used for that.
What about, I had a question, what about garage sale signs?
Do you usually, I guess you do see those in the right-of-way sometimes, don't you?
Yeah, they put them on telephone poles and things like that. Um, usually they're temporary, you know, for weekend or something.
You know, I think, once again, we have to use our, hopefully, our good judgment in determining whether a sign is, um, unattractive and effectively, um, reducing the line of sight in a high, uh, traffic area. I think that this is, um, intended for, obviously, the bridge, the bridge areas especially, because those are some locations that, uh, a lot of people are interested in putting signs there because of the visibility. But it looks like the planning commission and the legislative committee has addressed this as far as, uh, having, uh, uh, two signs on a corner, and they're covering it on both sides of the bridges without, um, having something on every location on the bridge, so, I, I think it does what it should do, and I think that we're, I think the council's pleased with it.
I believe those, the signs you're referring to, for garage sales, usually are attached to telephone poles, and probably the person that puts those up, uh, whomever, uh, does not get, uh, permission from Niagara Mohawk, because I don't believe Niagara Mohawk really authorizes anyone to put signs, be it garage sale, or a band at a local tavern, or whatever. Uh, it happens, and they haven't made a habit of complaining about it. They consider it a safety hazard for their people that have to climb the poles, and if those are put on with staples and like that, there is a possible, uh, hazard to, uh, to their employees. Uh, but without complaints from the pole owners, it's, uh, very difficult to, uh...
Even if it's not on a pole, it's an A-frame at the end of the person's driveline, that's no good either.
That is, uh, under this legislation would not be authorized.
I don't know, I, I think the city has a bigger problem with the, uh, those billboard-type signs where they're on wheels, and you tow them around, and they've got little black or big black arrows across the top with flashing lights. I mean, I could see, I would rather see regulation against that as far as being used as a permanent sign when it's really meant to be a portable, temporary sign.
Well, if they're on wheels, I wouldn't consider them a permanent sign.
But they use them in a, in a permanent way, and if those really, in my opinion, are much more of an eyesore to the community than an A-frame style sign, I mean, I go...
Well, under this legislation, they would not be, not be legal.
They what?
They would not be legal.
Yeah, I mean, this...
Those are portable signs.
This doesn't specifically say, whatever you call those signs, but it says a sign not, not affixed, so it would definitely include those, Mark.
I don't have an objection to the A-frame or T-frame, and I, I'm gonna vote against it.
Uh, Mr. Pierini, uh, did you, uh, the, the planning commission, when you reviewed this, uh, were you looking at those portable signs on wheels?
Yes, those portable signs on wheels, it's my understanding that they're covered under a different section of the, uh, sign ordinance. Uh, they are not allowed to be, have flashing lights. Those are, those are not permissible. And within this section of the, uh, the code, uh, they should not be allowed in the right-of-way.
I guess a bigger question, though, is we already have a sign ordinance that we don't enforce, do we need another one that we're not gonna enforce?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Yes, the, another question is, we already have a sign ordinance that we don't enforce. What are the chances of this one being enforced as well?
Well...
Sign ordinance, don't we?
You can't expect us to go out and enforce the, uh, the codes also, but they should be enforced.
The sign ordinance at this point in time does not address portable signs.
No, but it addresses a lot of other things that don't get enforced.
They will be enforced with complaints?
Well, that's right. They're complete...
Yeah, 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 okay.
Uh, Your Honor, does this include, uh, political signs, too? No, there is a section in the, in the, uh...
A big flashy political sign, yeah.
No, 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 there's already... Some of them are cheaper than others, you know? There's already, there's already a section in the sign ordinance that, uh, affects or controls the political signs.
I told you you couldn't use that with big flashing signs.
Any other discussion? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Go ahead. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, city clerk, we have a, the, the next motion.
Resolved that the mayor be authorized to sign a two-year agreement with the...
We have the second part of this.
Oh, he just closed it.
We just close the, uh, public hearing.
Whereas members of the public, members of the cabin council now in attendance were given their written and oral comments regarding this proposed local law, now therefore be it resolved that the proposed local law, which would amend subsection 177-25 of the Fulton City Code regarding sign regulations, is hereby approved.
Approved. Do I hear a motion?
Move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I oppose.
I oppose as well.
Motion is carried, uh, three to two. Next item.
Resolved that the mayor be authorized to sign a two-year agreement with the county of Oswego for white services for the year 2001 through, through 2002, in the amount of $6,000 per year.
I'm on it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Whereas the city wishes to enact a comprehensive plan, and whereas the city planning commission has begun looking at requests for proposals from outside consultants, and has the special expertise to oversee the preparation of the plan, now it is hereby resolved that pursuant to general municipal law, subsection 28-A5, the planning commission is directed to prepare a proposed comprehensive plan, and is authorized to hire a consultant or consultants to assist it in accordance with monies allocated therefore in the budget.
You have enough money, huh? Was it what, 10,000?
Was it 10,000?
Is, now it's on the budget?
I'm sorry.
How much money is in the budget for that?
15.
15, is that gonna be enough?
Uh...
Is that, I guess, is it enough to start, or is it enough to finish?
It'll be, it'll be close.
Okay. I'll move it.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll sign it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Whereas the city clerk was author, authorized and directed to receive sealed bids in his office, entered before July 25th, 2000, up to 2:00 PM, to be publicly opened and read aloud in the common council chambers of the municipal building, Fulton, New York, for the construction of a tourism and interpretive center at Bullhead Point, in accordance with specifications prepared by Thomas Arktander. Whereas said bids were received and publicly read aloud as authorized. Whereas by letter dated July 27th, 2000, Thomas Arktander recommends a warrant of the following contracts. General construction, rowing construction, in the amount of $138,950. Plumbing, Jaguars plumbing and heating, in the amount of $32,215. Heating and ventilation, to air tech, heating and air conditioning, $10,640. Electrical, NAP electric, $14,900, and the total amount being $196,705. Whereas the common council agrees with the recommendation made by Thomas Arktander, now therefore be it resolved that the contracts in the amount specified above for the construction of a tourism and interpretive center at Bullhead Point are hereby awarded, subject to review by the city attorney.
Do your motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved that the police department conducted traffic study on Fay Street between Route 481 and South First Street. I don't know what the reason for feasibility is.
You know who asked for it? Looks like the note is from you requesting this, traffic study?
That's something that actually I asked for.
You asked for it.
I, I actually...
Okay.
A lot of people are asking for it.
About two weeks ago.
This was done before, and it was rejected, but I really feel that it should be looked at because...
What, what are you, what are you looking for?
What, what's happening now, when you closed the other end of First Street, there's a lot of traffic exiting First onto Fay, so they're getting out to 481 because of the stoplight there. So you've got parking at the north side of that street, people are parking there, and it's causing problems with people getting around, traffic getting around those parked vehicles. There's, that street's not wide enough to get...
So you're looking for the, uh, a traffic study in regards to the elimination of parking on the...
North, north side of the road.
I think it should be eliminated on both sides of the road, because if you park on the south side of the street as well, you're gonna have the same problem.
Is there any no parking zone down there now?
On the south side of the street, there is no parking.
Uh, yeah.
Okay, but you're looking for it, no parking zone on the north side due to the increased traffic due to the closing of South First Street? Okay.
The north side of Fay Street.
The north side, I've done that before, yes.
Alderman, Truman, you're, you are gonna make this, uh, motion?
Yes.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
If that, I have a question, if that gets read, you know, if they don't recommend it, we can still pass that?
Yes.
I'd like to add something, if I could. Um, quite some, well, when we first closed the street, there was, as Alderman Sherman remembers, there was, uh, some businesses down in that section that had different requests, and one of which I think is a legitimate one, could we have a sign that, that says "Road closed" at such and such a street? So that anyone wanting to come down there can go down there as far as, and then they can exit onto Fay Street.
Okay, so you're looking, looking for a sign at the south end of First Street?
Coming off 41, yeah. I think, Mark, that you had...
It said "Road closed."
Reference to that. Reference to that from...
Division Street.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. You know, the business down there that's...
He's been threatening to relocate, but I think he's got a pretty good business down there, I think he's doing fairly well.
I think he, I think he is.
I can get that to the traffic. Next item.
Resolved that the city clerk be authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, August 15, 2000 at 7:00 p.m. in the common council chambers of the municipal building located at 141 South First Street, Fulton, New York, relative to a proposed local law to add Article 3 entitled Minimum Annual Charge to Chapter 173 of the City Code entitled Water.
Do I hear a motion?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Is there anyone in the audience that has any business to bring before the council? Is there anyone on the council that has any business to bring before the council?
I just have a couple of commercials. One is there's watercraft racing in the afternoon on Lake Nantahouanta, and of course, if there isn't, if there's anyone in the city of Fulton and the surrounding area doesn't realize that we have a Jazz Fest starting on Wednesday, then they're not paying attention, because we certainly are advocating the participation in the people in the city of Fulton, and it certainly has become a tourist attraction. We have many people that come in from Syracuse, Rochester, et cetera, that enjoy five days of great music and great food, so I think I'll be down there a couple of days, and I would hope that a lot of other people would be, too.
I, just to let you know, I was able to, to give a little plug for Jazz Fest down at the grand, the opening ceremony of Harbor Fest. They asked me to participate in that, and I was able to slip in a little plug for our Jazz Fest.
I thought I heard you say that, but I wasn't sure, because unfortunately, there was a large gathering there, and you always have people, I was on the wrong side of the sound system or something, I didn't hear a lot of what was being said, but you represented the city well.
Thank you.
Do you want to go? Why don't you?
I knew about the Jazz Fest, but until last night, I didn't, or Sunday night, I didn't know that we get a proposed new business coming to Six Ward, Wilson Farms, and I found out about it quite by accident, because down in the local store down in the area, there's a petition up for people assigned to come to a public hearing. Called the mayor this afternoon, and he was not aware of it till I mentioned it to him. The only thing I would ask, I know that this is going to the zoning board, but I would ask the people in the code department, Steve Lund and Warburus Stewart, these people, seems how we have to field the questions to the constituency, we should have some kind of idea what they're looking for. I had two or three calls tonight, and I had no idea what to tell them, hadn't, I said, "I don't know what you're talking about."
I agree. I agree wholeheartedly, and I will put a memo out to the code department tomorrow that if they get requests of this nature, that I am to be notified, and it will, the members of the council will be notified also.
Yeah, will that be, would that be this Thursday, your honor, or will that be next Thursday?
If it's on for the second Thursday...
Next Thursday.
It's going to be this Thursday.
This Thursday.
The 10th. It's the 10th, not the day for tomorrow, it's, it's next, next Thursday, Mike. Next Thursday.
Yeah, this would be the first Thursday, second Thursday would be, because today's August.
You're right with the 10th, but it's next Thursday.
Next week, okay. Well, that'll give me some time to try to figure out what they're going to do, but it makes it a lot...
I will try to see that the...
They got letters Friday in the mail.
That we have the information provided to the council members.
Okay. I guess while we're talking about that, I'll ask you a question, Ron. Back in January of 98, Fran Marbino came to us to request a zone change at the former Karen's Mini Mart.
That's right.
With the reason, Karen's Mini Mart was zoned R3, he wanted to tear it down and put in a Wilson Farms without the gas, which is what that notice says.
I remember that.
And we gave him the zone change, Karen's came down, Wilson Farms without the gas didn't go. Now, they're looking at Kenny's old building.
I heard they wanted to put a gas station there, too, I don't know how true it is.
I do, too. Do you think we should steer them over to the corner of Holly Drive in Emery?
I do, but I also know one thing, I, without knowing exactly what they're looking for, if that place is properly zoned and they're looking for a variance of some kind, the zoning board of appeals is about the only commission in the city that can act without the approval of the common council.
Well, I think the question that...
So if we were going to do anything about it, we should have done it a long time ago, and...
I think the question about the public hearing is going to be, it's C1, and they want to know if a convenience store qualifies as C1, because a grocery store is one, and a convenience store is a different one, one C1, one C2.
It's the difference between a...
I don't know the difference between, there was a store there years ago, Panafinos?
Right.
And that was probably 20 some odd years ago.
But they've had a store on the corner there for quite some time.
Smoke shop, bicycle store.
What they're looking, I think the difference is going to be between a small, small grocery and a convenience store, that's what the difference is. It's in wording in that...
I'd have to know what the difference is, and I'd also like to know if they're going to run 24 hours a day, that was the first question I had about two people tonight. And if they're going to keep the privacy screen, it's on the Kyuga Street side, it's existed for years, you know?
Well, that is all the questions we'll have to ask at that public hearing.
Are you going to go?
Yeah, I'll go to it, I mean, I'd kind of like to know ahead of time which...
Well, that would go to site plan review, right, planning commission?
For variance.
For variance, so they can certainly ask for all those different stipulations. Planning commission.
The other thing, your honor, is that intersection there, that's the intersection that we talked about, putting another traffic light in there.
We have to replace that light because the existing light is on Niagara Mohawk poles, we have to put our own poles in.
Okay, because I think, you know, the traffic is what it is there, evidently, that's why they ran it there, but I don't know how that would affect that intersection, you know?
Definitely.
If they put gas pumps in there coming in and out all the time and all that.
I would suggest everyone, if possible, attend that public hearing. But I will definitely get in touch with codes and make sure that this information regards to this, all that we have, is copied and supplied to all members of the council.
Thank you.
Anything else?
By law, it goes into effect upon filing with the secretary of state, which will be within days, so pretty much now.
So can I come in tomorrow and apply for permits?
Well, I don't think that office will be ready by tomorrow.
When do you, you'll send this to Albany tomorrow?
Yeah, we have to wait till we get the receipt back.
We'll get the receipt back, which will probably be a week?
Oh, yeah, I would say, yeah.
And then by then, you'll be ready to take permit applications after that.
In the meantime, my...
Will we be taking the unit applications for this, or will this go through codes?
Actually, I'm sorry, it would go through codes, yeah. But the key is it's not-for-profit organizations, which the way it's written, it does not, I don't think it's geared towards individuals, I mean, so you'd have to have some sort of association organization, not-for-profit, I would think.
I'll just announce in community about it.
I think it's not-for-profit, yeah, so...
So I can apply tomorrow then, or...
No, you won't be able to apply till the law, the law won't go into effect till we get the card back from the state, about a week.
So I can put the signs up in the meantime, sell these other ones until...
Yes, and it's, you know, as we told you before, until this goes into effect, you can do that.
Okay. Anything else?
There's a gentleman in the back.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to address a problem that's over on Emery Street about people that are speeding.
Put your name and address, please.
Jack Hart, 1019 Emery Street.
Okay.
There's a big problem with people speeding over on that street. You know, there's kids, you got adults that walk, they start right off a Holly Drive, and they zip. If they're coming into town, they do the same thing. Now, I called your office, Mayor, I complained about it a week ago, I went down to the police department, complained about it Saturday. When I'm at home, I never see a patrol car go by, and I was wondering why.
I will bring that up at our department head meeting tomorrow morning, and get this definitely to the chief of police, and ask him why we haven't had cars over there.
You know, just sooner than I see a kid get hit or have an adult get hit.
Definitely, we don't want either of those to happen.
Because if one does, then what's somebody going to say, "It's too late now"?
As I said, I will bring this up at the department head meeting tomorrow morning, and see if we can't get some patrols over there with some radar, and slow people down a little bit.
How many questions to see alone? Last one?
Let's go back to the signs. How do I keep the police department from taking my signs? I put them up, they take them.
They take them?
Basically, pick them up?
They took, they took the sign you had out on 481 because it was in a right-of-way and it was a permanent sign.
Right.
So that was in violation, that's why. Now, if you're not in violation, they shouldn't be taking your signs.
She's fine, told me to take them, put up, you'll take down regardless. Down, sitting there.
If it's, if it's within the ordinance, they shouldn't be taking them down. Well, what I'm saying is, they have to be legal signs. If they're legal signs, and you've done everything correctly, there shouldn't be a problem.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Soon that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss some pending litigation.
I move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.